Good evening, it's Brian.
Benner for six.
Hello Jacob.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. You okay? Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Great, good. Robert, are you there?
I'm here, I'm here.
You can hear me? Jacob, are you there?
He is not in the room right now.
Okay, uh, who else is there?
Uh, well, we've got Missy, we've got Ron, and we have a bunch of people from the public.
The public?
Public.
Okay, uh, hi, Missy, it's Brian.
Hi Brian, how are you?
I'm doing good. How are you and the family doing?
We're doing well, we're busy.
Oh, you will be kid, you will be. Yep.
Good evening, it is six o'clock PM, we're going to call this meeting to order, this is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Members present include myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Loveenheim, Supervisor Brian Barrett via Zoom, our Solicitor Ron Karasak, Engineer Missy Hodges in front level engineers, and Attentive Manager Glee Heilica is also present with us. Um, we do not have any announcements this evening, but we will proceed with the consideration of the approval of the minutes in the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three regular business meeting. Robert, do I hear a motion?
Um, motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim, second by myself, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll recuse myself, Jacob.
Let the record reflect what Mr. Barrett just said. We do not have any public hearings tonight, nor do we have any plans to act on former sense reports, Solicitors' report. Ron, do you want to note anything that we should note?
There's really nothing, uh, important, uh. I am working on trying to get those agreements in line for the eminent domain proceedings, if any, with respect to that airstrip road extension. Uh, and uh, just proceed, in fact, today, a conditional use application or resort to use. So, other than that, what did the files just as past weekend, because I was going through billing, so it's really trying to get together the the use with respect to that airstrip road. And whether we need to condemn, not condemn, there's pilot searches being done, so that really is up in the air, hopefully Mr. uh, Wolf will be back this week, or maybe the tail end of next week, he was gone for two weeks, so we may be able to then address those in a bit more detail.
Fair enough, okay. Missy, do you want to note anything?
Um, just a couple of things, uh, Smithfield Gateway, um, they notified us that they believe their punchless items are complete for Phase One A one. So we'll be going back out there to check those. Um, the MS four application for the township will be due in March, so.
Speak up, Wolf.
Oh, the MS four application, um, for the township will be due in March. I have a complete and ready for internal review, and then we'll get that to the township. And then, uh, uh, Kings Pond Road, we had a pre-construction meeting last week. And the start date is sometime in June after school let's up. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. First order of business under new business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which includes, uh, three items. Uh, an oversight on my end, there will be a little bit of discussion on the first item, so I will ask to approve consent agenda items two and three now, which are the advertisement of the spring cleanup bid notice, and the funding commitment letter for the one for nature grant application.
We'll make a motion to authorize the approval of items two and three.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim, I will second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And, uh, for the purposes of our meeting, I'm going to shift that first item, uh, next to, uh, item E under new business, so at this point, we will proceed to a presentation by the Monroe County Conservation District regarding the Act one sixty-seven implementation. So, who's here from the Conservation District?
Uh, hi, everybody, uh, my name's David Hooker, can, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Uh, my name's David Hooker, I'm one of the resource conservation specialists with the Monroe County Conservation District. Um, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the Act one sixty-seven plan renewal, uh, that, um, the Conservation District, the Planning Commission, and the Watershed Plan Advisory Committee for the county, uh, put together. Uh, just to give you a brief history on what Act one sixty-seven is, um, it's the Stormwater Management Act of nineteen seventy-eight. Back in nineteen seventy-eight, uh, local official or local and state government officials started to see, uh, what an issue stormwater was becoming, um, and they also recognized that local management was the best way to go about it, uh, so they passed the, uh, Stormwater Management Act of nineteen seventy-eight to accomplish that task, and, um, beginning then, uh, they began writing plans for specific watersheds throughout the Commonwealth, uh, in Monroe County, plans were written for the Broadhead Watershed and Toby Hannah Creek Watershed. Um, these plans are supposed to be updated every five years to keep, uh, keep with the most current land uses within those watersheds, uh, and ensure that the modeling, uh, that's happening with respect to each stormwater ordinance is, uh, um, being done in the most effective way, considering current land uses, uh, so the most, the most recent update to this plan was two thousand and six. Um, so it's, it was a bit out of date. Over the past two years, we've been meeting with municipalities, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, the Delaware River Basin Commission to, uh, get a, a renewal, uh, pass to just get things up to date, we didn't do a hard update, um, there were just minor changes to, to, uh, the ordinance into the plan, uh, just to get in compliance with, with new regulations, uh, the few things that were changed, there is now a exemption for high tunnels in certain instances, high tunnels are an agricultural practice, uh, it's a another word for a greenhouse, um, we updated the, uh, the rainfall values on there, previously there were static, uh, static rainfall data um, from about twenty years ago, we've updated it to, uh, require the use of NOAA fourteen data, um, those rainfall data are, are updated on a almost daily basis. Um, we've also, uh, updated the, the ordinance to reflect current DEP NPDES standards, um, and, uh, some changes to, uh, the calculation methodologies required to, to reflect those NPDES changes. Um, there really, really hasn't been a whole lot of major changes, uh, from the two thousand and six model ordinance. Um, but I believe Smithfield Township has received a copy of both the non-MS four stormwater ordinance and the MS four stormwater ordinance, um, a little bit on that, uh, in the MS four stormwater ordinance, there isn't much of a difference between that and the non-MS four stormwater ordinance, there's, I believe it's Article seven in our ordinance, uh, it pulls from the prohibition section from the model ordinance that DEP put out, uh, that will be a requirement for MS four regulated municipalities, um. So like I said, uh, these plans are supposed to be updated every five years, uh, we're back on track for that, uh, in about three years' time, we're going to continue uh, meeting with the Watershed Plan Advisory Committee, um, every, every township within the Broadhead and Toby Hannah Creek Watershed has received invites to those meetings, um, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here tonight, uh. These local management plans only work as well as the local buy-in that we have, um, so when that advisory committee comes back into play, we would really appreciate Smithfield Township's input on what's going into those ordinances, the modeling being done, um, just to make sure that it works the best that it can for Monroe County, and it makes, makes the most sense for each township. Um, so with that, uh, we just received a grant, uh, to fund a tour of the county. Um, our hydraulic engineers are going to be leading that tour, talking about different stormwater problems throughout the county. Um, we're really hoping to have at least one, hopefully two representatives from each affected municipality come along on that tour, so we can talk to you in more detail about what's to come, um, and some issues that we're seeing, particularly with maintenance of stormwater BMPs. Um, so i- if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them, um, and if there are any that I, I can't answer, I will refer you to, uh, one of our hydraulic engineers.
Anyone from, after that, any question? Okay, I see a question from Martha Carbone, Martha, go ahead.
So I just wanted to, uh, make the presenter aware and, um, see how this would factor in, but the Shawnee Creek Watershed is a separate small watershed in our township uh, apart from the Broadhead Watershed. Wanted to make him aware of that and see if there's any way that could also be considered under this umbrella.
Uh, yes, there is, so typically what townships have done, and I, I haven't looked at Smithfield's ordinance, but um, when the original modeling was done, there were watershed management districts set up throughout the county based on land use, soils, geology, a variety of factors to make sure that we're regulating development, uh, in an appropriate way to preserve water quality and quantity, um, and the way that that those are broken up, it tells you if you're in Watershed Management District B two, you have to uh, regulate post-construction runoff or peak runoff values to maybe pre-development standards, or, uh, there's, there's a table within the ordinance for that. And one of the, the Watershed Management Districts, I believe it's actually Management District A, um, just requires any any stormwater development, um, peak runoff rates need to be controlled post-development to pre-development standards. And, uh, in situations like in southwest Monroe County, where you have the Aquashackle and the Po Poco Creek Watersheds, um, what those townships did, uh, is just required, um, development outside of the modeled watershed to follow that post to pre-development standard, uh, requirement. So I, I'm not sure what, what Smithfield chose to do for the Shawnee Creek Watershed, um, but that, that is an option for you.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you for the presentation, I also can't speak to what we did in the past, but I think as we talk about our updated ordinance, we'll certainly take that a factor.
Sure.
So, and then with, with that though, uh, we sent out an email in December, um, townships are required to adopt, um, not necessarily our model ordinance, but you need to update your ordinance to be, um, in compliance is the wrong word, but to be, uh, I'll just say in compliance with current standards within the one sixty-seven plan, so those updates would mainly just include the amendment to the high tunnel exemption, um, and updating that, that modeling data. So it's not an entire rewrite of your stormwater ordinance, it would be two, two to three minor amendments.
Sure, well, ours is fairly dated at this point, so we're updating it to reflect, uh, the new statewide standards as well as the local standards, so we're trying to do that in concert, actually.
Perfect, um, so, yeah, feel free to reach out to our office with any questions, um, Drew Wagner and Mike Wilk are hydraulic engineers on staff, um, they, they would be the perfect ones to talk to about it.
Perfect, well, thank you very much, David, for coming and doing this for us.
Yes, tha- thank you for having me, and like I said, we're going to be doing a tour in April, it would be really great if at least one of the supervisor, supervisors could come along, um, if not two of you, and, uh, we'll be sending an invite out for that later this month.
Perfect, thank you, we will, uh, be in touch on that.
Great, thank you for having me.
Thank you again. Alright, so, up next, we have a presentation from Kristen Albrecht from the Delaware Water Gap Defense Fund.
Yes, hello, where would you like me to stand?
Anywhere's fine, the camera will, uh, be up, so wherever's best for you.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Kristen Albrecht, I'm here representing the Delaware Water Gap Defense Fund, and, uh, so I do the proposal that's been put forth by John Donahue and the Sierra Club proposing that the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area be re-designated as a national park and preserve. Um, I have an information packet, I've, I've got a copy for each one of you, if I can.
Absolutely.
Hand these out. And I'll speak to what's in these, and you're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. So, um, as you may know, uh, last year, a proposal was put forth to re-designate the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area to a national park and preserve. The proposal was authored by Mr. John Donahue and supported by local chapters of the New Jersey and Pennsylvania Sierra Club. The Sierra Club of New Jersey has since withdrawn their support for this proposal. Um, and what's included in the packet I gave you is, um, some information about our organization, the nonprofit Delaware Water Gap Defense Fund, and, uh, there's a copy of the proposal, so that you can have in there to read. We also have statements of opposition from Congressman Cartwright and Gottheimer. There's a letter of opposition from New Jersey State Senator Oraho and Assemblyman Space and Worth. There's an article from the Tri-County Independent News, uh, the statement of opposition from the Pike County, from Pike County themselves. There's a letter of opposition from the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. There's a letter of opposition from the Pike County Planning Commission. And, uh, as an example of a resolution to oppose, there's Sand East of New Jersey's resolution to oppose the proposal. There's also a list of current counties and municipalities that oppose the proposal and community associations and other organizations, so I do want to speak to the proposal, the proposal has three main points, the first one being prestige. They argue that if we re-designate and become a national park and preserve, we're in a better position to receive increased funding by the National Park Service. And the fact is that there is no guarantee of increased funding from the NPS, uh, if we are to re-designate. And we can look to, as an example, um, in twenty twenty, the New River Gorge Recreation Area was re-designated to a national park, and they've received no additional funding, and they have seen an increase in visitors, putting strain on existing infrastructure and EMS services, um, so it's been a hardship for them there, and there are currently four hundred and twenty-three national park units. Delaware Water Gap for a national recreation area sits at number, I believe it's twenty-seven on their budget, and they're well ahead of many national park units. So there, it's, it doesn't matter what you're called, um, it's just a matter of lobbying for funding, doesn't push you in a better position necessarily, um. And currently, DWA has a hundred and sixty million dollar maintenance backlog. The National Park Service has a twenty-two billion dollar national, um, maintenance backlog. The chances of DWA receiving a hundred and sixty million dollars in order to just come up to date with what they need plus additional money for what would be needed to create additional infrastructure based on, you know, increased visitor count, which the proposal, they estimate like a million more people per year could be coming to this area. So, the chances of getting that funding seem highly unlikely, um. Another reason that they give for this re-designation is equity. And right now, DWA is free for the most part, with the, you know, exception of a few areas, Milford Beach and some boat launches, um. But right now, it's free to access, it's free to use for anybody to come and use it. And there's the chance with becoming a national park, it would limit restrict, uh, limit usage and possibly have fees. Uh, they argue for an economic boon, that more visitors would, you know, bring more money to the area, which would also bring more development, um, hotels, strip malls, things that are, have negative environmental impact. Um, one thing that is of high concern is a strain on our EMS system. Um, we can look at New River Gorge again, for an example, they had increased visitors coming to the area, and then they had increased calls in their EMS. And as we know here, whenever there's an incident in the park, they, our EMS respond to those calls, the National Park Service has a very limited, um, uh, emergency response. So every call that comes and takes EMS away from our communities, uh, makes them less available for people in our communities that need them. Um, has an impact on taxpayers, if we have an increase of visitors here, the roadways that are not federal are our responsibility to maintain. So it would be an in- impact there, if there were any loss of private land, um, obviously that erodes the tax base with property taxes going into the educational system. And I've got a page full of environmental impacts, the letter that's in there from the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, uh, summarizes a lot of these environmental impacts very well, including the environmental impact that the National Park Service couldn't in no way control, and that's development outside the park were it to happen. Um, and it just would adversely affect our water quality here. A re-designation would completely eliminate fishing for food. You could still fish, but it would be only catch and release in the entire area, not just the national park. So everywhere in the recreation area now where we can currently fish would be only catch and release if it were re-designated. Hunting would be eliminated in the national park area, it would be permitted in the preserve area, um, by permit only. And that is of, of big concern to a lot of people. And then we also have just a lack of vital information, there's no economic impact statement, there's no environmental impact statement, and when pressed, Mr. Donahue says we don't need one because we're not a government organization, um, and he also admitted that a re-designation would provide no additional protection except the elimination of hunting. I could go on. I've got more, but I think I've said enough. Does anybody have any questions?
I have some questions. I mean, I've heard some of these arguments before, some of them I haven't, but it seems like it comes down to. You don't feel that as a national park, it would get any greater share of the budget of the national parks. That's one. The other is that. The visitor's numbers would increase. And the third is that the, if there are any genuine members of the Nafi tribe, they would have to catch and release. They can't eat their own fish. This is true.
Well, anybody, you know, anybody who fishes there would be able to eat them.
And it 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 seems like. Sorry to say this, a fair amount of nimbyism in this, which is saying, we don't want it in our backyard. And as far as the national park budgets, I don't really know. I know John Donahue believes that they get more budget with the national parks. There's, there's no doubt about this. This park is terribly underfunded. It's, it just has no real source of funding. National parks usually. Usually have a fee, I think, to get in at most of them. There's none here. And that's very nice, but it's also saying that the situation in the park where. We're the nearest park to the metropolitan area, which serves, you know, maybe twenty million people. There's nothing else around. And it seems like the people deserve a park here. And what they're getting is, I think, an underfunded area which is inundated every weekend because there are not enough beaches. There's not enough facilities and there's not even enough staff. So. I don't know how we solve that. I I I thought that making a national park might be a way towards more of that. And, you know, when you, when you talk about how overcrowded it is, we all go by. The Mount Tammany Trail there every, and every weekend. People can't even park there. There's no place even to park. So and that's just a small part of it. And I know one of the proposals several years ago was to. Have an electronic toll on two oh nine. So if you went into the park and you were there for more than, let's say, three hours. It would be the same thing as if you come across the Delaware River Bridge where it's automatically. Told to your car. And the reason for the three hours is saying, well, anybody's going to Milford or coming back, it wouldn't affect them at all. So it wouldn't affect locals. But it would be a huge source of revenue for the park. And right now, it's, question is, other than what the the government gives them, what is the source? I I know, again, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not advocating one side or another. I'm trying to understand this. For instance. At Smithfield Beach, there's a parking, there's, there's a parking fee. And from what I've heard from the the last superintendent, which is not John, it was somebody else, is it. It'd be better not collecting the fee because it costs more to have someone in the booth than it is than it does for the fee. So it's, where do we get the money here? And I don't know the answer, but it's one of the leading questions I have about whether it should be a park, whether it should stay as a national recreation area. And I have to say for myself, I think the attitude that we don't want any more people here is wrong. So this is, this is a great resource and who are we to say, don't come here? So I'm I'm caught between both sides and I'm just airing this. I'm not saying I'm advocating one or the other, but I'm trying to understand it.
Sure. Well, you bring up a lot of good questions, a lot of good points. And one about funding. Is if you look at the top funded National Park Service units in the country, who of the five top funded units are recreation areas? So in order to get more funding. Sandy Hook and Golden Gate in California. So in order to get more funding, we need to lobby for it. And like I mentioned, the National Park Service nationwide has a twenty-two billion dollar maintenance backlog deficit. We have a hundred and sixty million here in Dila. So it's not just a problem here with the crumbling infrastructure, the bathrooms that are out of order, the trails that have been closed since the storm in twenty seventeen. It's a national issue. Nationally, the national parks are understaffed. The main, the infrastructure needs maintenance, roads need maintenance, you know, systems need upgrading and expanding to accommodate the number of visitors. And. Just because we re-designate doesn't give us necessarily a better position to receive more funding. They're already in dire straits. As to your point about. Having a fee area, fees collected go to a national pool and then are redistributed. So the chances of DWA receiving a proportionate num, you know, amounts from what they collect is. Pretty low. There are, and there are currently eighty-one ingresses into the recreation area as it stands right now. So how could we control a fee area? Or how could the National Park Service control a fee area? One solution, and it's been done elsewhere, is to expand the borders so that you make cleaner borders. But what happens there is eminent domain comes into play and people are removed from their properties. That's a huge issue, you know, it's a. Big concern for a lot of people that live, you know, nearby and bordering the recreation area. And, you know. I agree, like, it's a beautiful place. We have this park. It's currently available to people. Yes, we have a lot of people coming here. We don't have the infrastructure to support it. And if we do want to attract more people to the area, we need the infrastructure, more bathrooms, visitor center, more parking, shuttle services, whatever it may be. But redesignation isn't necessarily the answer.
Well, it seems to me we should be putting the question of whether it's, it will be or will not be aside and saying, how do we get more money?
Right. I agree. I agree. And that's something that our organization, that's like kind of a next step, you know, right now, we want to save off this from happening. And that's the components have said, oh, it's as easy as putting it in an omnibus bill and we can just get it, you know, put through. So our mission right now is to say, hey, hold on, like, we don't want that to happen. We're not ready to receive all these increased visitors. We need to see what we can do.
Question about. So is the imposition to the designation really just a temporary thing in the event that there would be the funding and the infrastructure? You know, for that, because I I think fundamentally, the concept is really great, or the concept generally, but the concept presented. Kind of didn't really meet that. It talked about why it's great that it would be a park without the. You know, funding necessary. When I think you said, we're already like twenty-sixth highest funded in terms of the National Recreation Area. So that's. You know, disappoint or higher than national parks, right? So that's disappointing. So I think. Realistically instead, with these, you know, with our area member, you know, Congress not supporting it, then to New Jersey, I would. I think at this point, there's been so many groups that were initially supportive, like I I talked to a Warren Candy Commissioner about it. I know that they were unanimous in supporting it, I think, last year. And then that that changed.
In March.
Yeah.
We we challenged them and the reasoning behind their. Yeah, Sandy Hall. And they resisted for support after we challenged them as a reasoning behind the support of the, of the, of the proposal. Interestingly enough, Mr. Donahue was involved, not only writing proposal, but we suspect that he was also involved with writing the. Resolution to support it. And I will say that for the record, Mr. Donahue's been caught in several outright lies about his work on this proposal. We, I personally view it as a suspender snapping thing for him. And until he can come up with some kind of a plan for improved infrastructure, bridges and other questions that we've challenged him, there's no, there's no plan. This is simply proposal, very scary plan. You're talking about a threat of eminent domain here. If other parks are annexed to this, how there would be a bridge gap between those parts. There are so many unanswered questions. We are asking. You to pass the resolution opposing, but until all that information comes forward and it comes up for public review and comment. Right now, I will say Congressman Cartwright was one of the first congresspeople to come out and help us with this movement, keep on the appropriations committee. So I, you know, and we do have a meeting coming up with Superintendent Doyle's staff, I believe. In the next couple of weeks where we can hopefully work with the Park Service to get more funding.
Because I think that would, that would be like the next logical step, right, is more funding because at this point. The designation. Doesn't matter. It's, 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 you know, we talk about things in name only. It would really just change the name, right? And and well, I mean, there's some other changes, but fundamentally. I don't think the details matter to, as long as the federal government's not the one proposing it. It perhaps, you know, doesn't have the information necessary to.
But you both seem very articulate. And the the only comment I have, I think, is an old advertising copywriter, I'd say, instead of it being the defense fund, it should be. The, put aside the question, how do we fund our park, period? It then becomes very positive then. Nobody can, nobody can argue with that. Like, let's, let's, let's answer the question that needs to be answered, then we worry about other questions.
Yeah.
Kristen.
Yes.
Brian Barrett Supervisor, I'm on Zoom. A Water Gap Defense Fund, is that a local or can you give me a little background on it?
Yes, we formed in March or April, April of twenty twenty-one, the Delaware Water Gap Defense Fund. We're based in Leighton, New Jersey. And our mission is to, you know, advocate for the protection of the recreation area.
Well, yeah, right. Defense Fund, okay. It just seemed to me that. No one wants to see it become a national park. And that can't be so, you know, there's gotta be other people that that would. But your presentations were totally slanted. And it it seems to me like almost set in concrete. So just my comment.
Well, Brian, the tip, sort of what I was saying, change the thrust. It's how do we fund? Forget the the question of what it is. And at least then we can sort of table it and, you know, it's becomes not controversial because we're not considering it, we're saying.
Well, none of us, none of us are members of Congress, right? So let's, let them. Answer the ultimate question, but if we're happy to lobby for more funding and whatnot, let us know how we can be most helpful. We'll certainly do.
Thank you.
Then we promise not to catch any fish.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Next is a consideration of the general code proposal, which is the new proposal to codify our ordinances and. We put the mapping, but not, I mean, Julia, you had made a recommendation to the board to go with the.
With the standard plan. The difference between a standard plan and a premium plan is whether or not we have the option to put our minutes on the full website. Seeing as how we already do that on our township website, it's one more repetitive thing. So let's save the extra two hundred bucks and go with the standard plan. And it turns out that we find out that we need the premium, we've known shift. For now, at least, in a position to save funds.
Make a motion to. Accept the general code proposal for a standard.
Motion by Mr. Love and I'll do it here a second.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Second, Mr. Barrett, any questions?
I do have a comment, actually. I believe I sent this to you all in an email already, but I did speak with General Code and from now on, as we pass our ordinances. We will start codifying immediately. So there will only be a week or two lag. Between us passing something and our code being updated.
Awesome. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is a consideration for resolution number five twenty-two. And I'm also going to couple with that the approval item one from the consent agenda, which is. Related with regard to the bridge. But for a reason that I will explain in more detail a little later, I'm going to recuse myself from discussion on that item. So I'm going to. Have Julia introduce that or Missy, whoever wants to.
I will take it. Okay, so as everyone is aware, we got a multimodal grant from PennDOT for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rehab the bridge. On Green Mountain Drive. In order, now that we've gotten the the grant thing, we need to do the actual signing of the grant. And the way that cannot work through that is that we need to provide them a resolution that says, these are the people that are authorized to sign documents that we send to you. Beforehand, because we submitted this back in twenty twenty-one, Brian was on the signer, Jacob was on as a signer. He has since recused himself and Brian has asked that he not have to sign anything online because the system is very complicated. As such, I've written on the resolution. For designated signers to be Robert and myself, so we can sign these documents and move this project forward. As far as the other part of this, the authorizing advertisement of the RFQ, because this is a PennDOT project. We actually have to go through a request for qualifications process in order to select our engineer. We have to go through a regular advertising for that. So what that means is that we need to put something in the Pocono Record stating that we're looking for engineers. I also need to reach out to six engineering firms. We will get proposals that do not have any funds attached to them. And we will pick our engineer based on who we think is most qualified to complete the work. This is a PennDOT requirement and we are required to do it before we can move forward in anything. And I think that's, Missy, anything to add? No, I don't think so.
Just for my notes, Julie, that is a requirement in order to use as grant money for the bridge repair.
It, it is a requirement, the RFQ, there is a requirement. That we need to use so the engineering funds, which we're allowed to use up to ten percent of the grant money for engineering costs. That's the process we need to follow.
Okay. Fair enough.
Do I hear a motion on this item? Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Love and time, any question? All in favor? Aye. Brian?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, one question, though. Do, if I want to sign. As I did in the past, I have to do it electronically?
Yes. It's, what happens is they send you an email saying that you have a document that you need to sign. I believe PennDOT goes through the D C E D stuff. I could be incorrect on that, but it's a digital signature process where you have to sign in. The, the last time that we encountered this, you had a bunch of issues and asked to be removed from it.
Okay. Well, let the record reflect that Mr. Barrett, Mr. Love and I, I recuse myself. Next is a discussion and the consideration to request the planning commissioner views of the draft solar and warehouse curative amendment ordinance. Who would like to start on that? On, Julia?
I I will start if that's okay, Ron. So the board has had the solar ordinance from the last time that you looked at it. I have updated all of the changes that the planning commission asked for. There are a few grammatical errors where the county instead of township. And I also reflected the change related to the overlay district instead of the M one zone. Because of the Broadhead Watershed Association suggestion that putting it only in M one would lead to it being an exclusionary use in that space. Pass to that, the ordinance is what you have in front of you now. Once you, we shift over and do the warehouse portion of this, once you guys approve to pass this, you'll have to do so with changes, if you will. Because for the sake of my adron sanity, we have been doing these updates as two separate pieces. And from saving, saving money and passing the ordinance, we're going to do it as one to meet the section six oh nine point two requirements as required by the M B C. So once you say yes, go, everything will be combined and then sent to the planning commission no later than February twenty first. They will review it and do formal recommendation or denial at their March ninth meeting. And then you will vote to accept it at your March twenty second meeting, pending everything goes well. Ron, that's all I've done for solar. You're up.
All right, well, we, we. Completed the draft of the warehouse ordinance and. Julie has given her comments with respect to the ordinance. And I believe yesterday, or maybe even today, I'm not sure. Supervisor Lovenheim gave his comments with respect to the ordinance and, in a nutshell, basically saying it might be a bit too. Intense or restricted, et cetera. intense or restricted, et cetera. That has to be reviewed by the planning commission of our township along with the Monroe County Planning Commission. Uh, and basically the same timeframes that we're talking about, so. I believe the warehouse ordinance is on for tomorrow for planning commission to review, but I do not know. If they have reviewed it and if they've had sufficient time to review it, so. Obviously, I think we're gonna try to make that dovetail with the same timeframe as the solar ordinance. Uh, so that we can keep on that schedule because we have, had the ordinance adopted by, uh, it March twenty seven or March twenty nine, something like that.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven, okay. And again, we have to advertise once a week for two weeks, et cetera. So. So that's, that's what is on my end with respect to that.
Okay.
Just to be clear on the, on the revision of the solar with the Broadhead Water, I think it was mainly to, um, include uh, overlays for certain areas where solar could be used, which is mainly, I think, in the, the power line rights of ways, not.
The solar overlay that Eric Kugman suggested was going point two five miles off of the main line. Um, in any direction, and I believe he put a thirty acre minimum on parcels that would be viable if we had solar coming.
That's about it, though, there's, there are other power lines, there's nothing else.
That, yeah, the power lines demonstrate where the overlay is because we will be so close to a main power line having solar, if you feel.
Okay. We're getting to warehouses here.
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
You all have my comments, it's, you know. I assume we've looked through those and we've got Julia's comments. You know. Basically, I'm saying that a lot of what this is, uh, or what is specified is already covered in our, on our, uh, uh, ordinances. Mainly through our Saldor ordinance and ordinances, so it seems like it's redundant here, and I, I think, as I remember, this was, um, um, inspired by, uh, an ordinance in another township where they don't have a, a, a light industrial zone, everyone's on it, so. All of this was done for overlays, but we don't need that, we don't have that problem. So anyway, just like, uh, some, uh, feedback discussion on what I'm saying there.
Well, I, I think I, I agree generally with what you're saying, I do think that there's some need for additional uh, coverage, like screening requirements when something is adjacent to a residential zone.
If, if I can jump in for a moment, the Saldor and the way that works is that it explains how something needs to occur. Um, specifically the buffer that you mentioned, our Saldor goes through and explains that you have to have so many of this kind of evergreen tree, twenty percent deciduous, et cetera, et cetera, but the Saldor does not lay out how big that buffer needs to be. Um, so it's important, as we consider this, that we leave those buffers in there because the zoning portion uh, of this item will demonstrate how wide it needs to be while the Saldor demonstrates how it's created. Um, and that goes for the parking too, um, parking is explained how it needs to work in our Saldor, uh, but not necessarily the number of spots related to this use.
Well, but how can we determine the number of spots without knowing the size of the building there, why not? You know, it seems like our, our Saldor ordinance specifies so much for, uh, for any circumstances, is this different, it's just that it's, it's a, uh, a depot rather than, let's say, uh, you know, an apartment house, but we have specifications for industrial as well as, as, um, um, residential, don't we? I think we do.
Yes, um, but Missy, correct me if I'm wrong here, because I only, I, I went through our Saldor briefly, it is big. Um, but those are laid out according to the uses in the zoning side of things. Whereas the Saldor says, for every fifteen parking spaces you have in, in place X, you have to have a berm with a drainage spot. So it's not necessarily the numbers, but how it is properly to be constructed. Uh, like, i- if you painted it, it could be the difference between, uh, zoning and building codes. Um, zoning demonstrates where on your property you can put a house, but it's the building codes that say, here's how your electrical needs to work, here's how your plumbing needs to work.
That's correct, and rather, um, your zoning ordinance um, define or calculates the required parking spaces based on building size, so. I don't, if you were concerned about, it's, you know.
I, I would rely on you and Ron to say, what do we really need here and what do we already have? Because I've brought up these things, but I'm not an expert on this, but we are.
This is a little inconvenient because Mr. Fessler is not here, uh, but he did promise us that he would give us, um, square feet for impervious surfaces and whatnot, so we are waiting on those numbers from him.
And, and the other thing I pointed out is that, um, there's a difference between um, a warehouse or wholesale establishment and a fulfillment center. And it seems like, uh, we already have warehouses in the E D zone. Maybe we should define it more, we, we are giving it a better definition, but it, it seems like we ought to have, um, some leaning the size in the E D zone, so w- we, we, we clearly state that what is a warehouse is not a very different definition, but a different size.
Because I think most of the abuses that we're encountering in other municipalities are not in fact the traditional warehouse where there is like potentially some internal manufacturing and, you know, maybe a couple of trips per day. But the places that have forty and fifty, you know, idling stations with diesel trucks with, um, you know, truck beds. I think that's really where the issues are, especially environmentally, because.
Well, as, as long as we're not saying that we're, uh, disallowing warehouses in the E D. Because we may have places in E D zone where warehouses are perfect, like J Park, something like that. If somebody wants to build one. So, why wouldn't, and then the, the question is, should we limit the size of those things too? I think we should, but.
Certainly, I mean, I, I, I have no issue limiting the size of warehouses, I mean, I, I don't. I don't love them in the E D zone, but there are perhaps places where it makes more sense than others, and those are probably on the larger parcels. Like, I, I generally don't want any of these types of uses directly adjacent to a residential zone. But on parcels that, you know.
I think that's, that's fair.
You know, that, but, you know, a major road or in a, uh, you know, the commercial zone.
Do you wanna then have a, um, a maximum square footage for a warehouse or, or a wholesale establishment?
I mean, when I think of wholesale establishment, I'm thinking about, like, the way it's defined makes it sound like a giant Kiko or BJ's or something like that, like a Sam's Club. Like, I think of that as more of a commercial use where it's like warehouse itself is, you know, more industrial, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want large warehouses in the traditional sense.
Well, Jacob, uh, I, I, a warehouse is a, a lot more than just industrial or light industrial. It's traffic and it's truck traffic. Uh, quite frankly, Monroe County, we can get buried if we're not careful. I would say we, uh.
But Brian.
Ron, you're there, Ron, did you, you, uh, put together an ordinance, warehouse ordinance?
Ron, anytime we would have a, a warehouse or anything built, we still have to have an impact study about the traffic anyway.
Uh, they'll beat you down, they'll beat you down.
What? What'd you say?
You'll lose.
Oh, well, that, well, what I'm saying is I, I think there's, there's different uses, and that's why in the ordinance that Ron, you know, provided to us, it defines different uses.
Well, let, let's let the P C look at Ron's ordinance. Uh, Robert, you said it, he, he's in the midst of it down there in, uh, Mount Bethel.
Oh, what?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's what he's basing it on, and, and, you know, Ron, you can speak for yourself, if you prepared this, you know, in order to have some preliminary discussion before we finalize it with the planning commission.
Yeah, Brian, I have received, received for review the Plainfield Township, Northampton County warehouse ordinance, that ordinance is split up into, uh, an area where you have larger warehouses and smaller warehouses, I was also given the ordinance from Pocono Township, Monroe County to review, I also was given an ordinance from uh, Wilkes Barre, Lees County to review, and in looking at those ordinances, I attempted to fashion an ordinance that gave all of those specific items that I think were a problem, uh, addressed. Now, what I, what I don't see here, and it's not meant to be a uh, backhanded comment, but, you know, we don't have a zoning officer review of either the solar ordinance or this ordinance. Why not? Shouldn't the zoning officer who's gonna be enforcing these ordinances do a review and help us out here a little bit? So, I'm a little miffed about that, because, you know, we're preparing ordinances that are based upon policy, but we're not being told what policy should be followed or not followed, but in any event, this ordinance would need to be, this meaning the warehouse ordinance would need to be reviewed by both the township planning commission and the Monroe County Planning Commission before it could be even considered for adoption. So, we will have those comments to determine what exactly, uh, can be done, but we're running late on time in the sense that we need to have both ordinances adopted by March twenty seventh. And that means we need to have the reviews by both planning commissions. If there are changes suggested that the township wants to make, it has to then be re-reviewed by both planning commission. And then there has to be three advertisements put out. Uh, no earlier than thirty days before the advertising, or less than seven days, once a week for two successive weeks. So, we, we've gotta get this all together by the end of, I think, uh, you know, the end, end of this month. So that we have enough time to get things done.
I think all the feedback that we've discussed thus far is valuable, and I, I think I, I generally agree with what Robert wrote, but I would like some more specifics from, from John about the square footage and whatnot, but. I mean, I think there's enough here to revise at least a little bit what we're looking at tonight.
Well, I still do, but go back to one thing that I, I feel should be in there, which is um, the maximum size of a warehouse, just so no one can come in and say, well, I'm building a warehouse, I'm not building, uh, 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 a logistics center, we can say, okay, well, warehouse is, uh, thirty thousand square feet, but that's it.
Uh, that's fair, I also think fundamentally the definitions are going, are going to limit that too. Because if somebody applies under the wrong thing, they're gonna be forced to reapply on the correct thing. Um. I mean.
Depends how smart their lawyers are.
Yeah.
Well, they're smart. They're smart. Uh, by the way, uh, my Pocono, as we speak, is, is me, again, to reinforce their, their ordinance. Uh, they thought they had a good one, and, uh, I, I'm familiar with the Pioneer Diner up there on six eleven.
Closed?
It's, it's all ordinance, it's all warehouses. All the way down six eleven. So, they're going back to the board to s- to s- to, uh, request certifying their ordinance.
Well, Pocono Township adopted theirs, uh, last night, or not last night, the, the day before. Um, which is great, and that's, I think, loosely what some of this is based upon, I think our only difference is.
Yep, and then, you know, Lehigh and Northampton Counties, the counties are actually doing ordinances. Okay, Ron, you might be familiar with that. In Northampton County.
Now, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, which is the equivalent of the Monroe County Planning Commission, has done some example of model, model ordinances. And again, these are all, these are all policy decisions, there's nothing illegal or legal about them. It's what, though, do the supervisors as the elected officials want to do. Uh, and based upon the problem that I saw for Mount Bethel Township. Uh, it appears that the height of the warehouses are an issue, so maybe that should be addressed here. The size of warehouses are an issue, maybe that should be addressed here. The traffic that is going to be generated by the warehouses, that is an issue. Uh, and also making certain that there is a secondary access and perimeter around each warehouse to be able to get out and get to another location if the main access is blocked, or to allow first responders and fire trucks to access the warehouse if there's an emergency, so those four or five issues, I think, should be addressed here unless they are addressed in other ordinances, and quite frankly, I don't know that, I don't know our three hundred ordinances by heart. I would hope the zoning officer would be able to tell us, this is what we need to put here.
Well, I, I will say, uh, because you're, you're not sending it, Ron, that you addressed all of those things in the draft ordinance that's in front of us. We're talking about it like it's not here. Everyone would just read it, it's there.
Right. Right.
But, um, I, I think that at this point, this is becoming unproductive, so can we agree to send the rest of our feedback by the end of the week to Ron and/or Julia? So we can have a formulated draft to actually vote upon at our next meeting, or are we going to agree to what we have written in front of us? And see what changes come back and then finalize it from that point and still meet the deadline? Because there's, there's two options here, and.
I, I would think that to try to make the work at least cost effective is send the drafts that have been prepared, if it's just a warehouse one, because I know planning commission looked at the other one.
Right.
To our planning commission to look at and Monroe County Planning Commission to look at. At that point, you'll have those comments too, and at that, you can then say, okay, let's incorporate some of Supervisor Love and I's comments here, let's incorporate some of these, and let's get this ordinance advertised, because as long as you're not changing it from right, the, uh.
Is this on the planning commission agenda for tomorrow night?
Yes.
I think it is, but I'm not sure how quick, I mean, I did try to get the ordinance on quickly, maybe it's been out maybe a couple of weeks. Uh, but they may not have read it, you know, obviously, a lot of reading on all our plates. Well, and they can have a special meeting to further discuss it if they want to. Yeah, so.
Ron, will we run afoul of the M P C if we don't have the warehouse portion passed by March twenty seven?
Um, I, I don't know if you'll run afoul of the M P C, but it may well be that you will not be able to go back to that well for five years, so that you'll have to live with whatever the ordinance president says.
I, I think it says pretty clearly that, that you have to have it adopted or reaffirm your ordinance in that hundred eighty day period.
Right, so then.
Either adopted or reaffirm what you have, you can say, you know what, we've looked at this, I think it's okay. Now, from what I'm told, that's not what the feeling is, but I think that's what would occur, if in fact it's not adopted by that March twenty seven deadline, but frankly, I have to go look again, I mean, these laws change the way you and I change our underwear, so it's, it's always gotta be something fluid, you know, it's always a moving target, but I can check.
So, but then to make sure with this point, if then is the solar, are we going to just separate that and move the solar forward independently?
Do that.
But we can't, we can't move them forward together if the warehouse is going to go back to the planning commission.
Well, yes, we can, because they will reaffirm what they already reviewed, I mean, we're not gonna change this ordinance in the next twenty four hours, are we?
Well, that.
Because they have that meeting, that's what I'm saying, let's not do that, let's get the feedback from the commission first, and also the same from the county planning commission, because they can do an expedited review. Let's do that, and then we'll pick and choose appropriately in fourteen days.
We have, we have the, um, schedule, uh, start advertising hearing by the March first, isn't it?
Well, we don't do March first, I, it's once a week for two successive weeks.
Right, but the problem is the planning commissions, just like with the public hearing problem that we had months ago, the planning commissions are required to have thirty days to review this. Which means that if we, let's say we go to the end of our deadline, March twenty seventh, we have to get the completed thing to them no later than February twenty seventh with all of these comments and all of these changes.
I'm confident that that's exactly what we're gonna do, yeah.
Okay, so we'll also need to schedule, uh, another meeting on the twenty seventh of March to meet to reaffirm this.
And that's the advertising against, once a week for two successive weeks. Not more than thirty days ahead, not less than seven days before. Uh, generally, I will do two successive weeks as like Monday, and then seven days later Monday. But the statute doesn't say that, it says two successive weeks, so I can advertise on a Sunday and the very next Monday and make it required, immediately requiring.
Let's aim to make it by moving the skin of our teeth, but.
Let's go that way.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion?
Not, uh, well, yes, actually, we do need a motion to request those reviews. So. Brian, do I hear a motion from yourself to do exactly that?
Yes, you do.
Hey, motion from Mr. Barrett, do I hear a second, second, second? Mr. Levinheim, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the consideration for the planning commission's recommendation to deny the Black Buffalo land development plan. Uh unless I'm about to be corrected, we haven't heard from them since then and their deadline's about to expire. At this point, I'm comfortable denying the plan based on the planning commission's recommendation.
When does their deadline?
Is that a motion?
Tomorrow. About to be.
That's why.
Do you make a motion?
In about ninety seconds, once Ron finishes.
That's why I requested that the township planning commission. Review this at the last meeting and I would say that, and I even sent an email on January sixteen. To Attorney Williams, uh and Attorney Kanzinger. With respect to this project and say, I haven't seen any new plans or submissions, so. Be March nine or.
Did they, did they?
February nine deadline would occur. Well, if they filed a new plan as I say, January one. Well, then it would not expire to the end of March. They didn't, or we don't have any. So the deadline is tomorrow. And I would say if you're going to recommend or if you're going to approve denial, that it would prove based upon. The township engineer's second review letter of January twen- January, of July twenty five, twenty twenty two.
My suspicion is they haven't replied because they're not being paid.
Probably. I, I don't know. All I know is that Attorney Williams is a good lawyer. In fact, he's the one that represented Verizon when.
Yes.
He beat my butt in that federal court case, so I mean, he will do something.
We got that.
We've heard from him and his associates.
We have a phone tower because of him.
So then you do motion to deny, right?
Will you amend your motion to include uh per the second review letter of uh July twenty fifth, it doesn't twenty two?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Levinheim, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You denied. Um next is a discussion about the Pokemont Business Bureau grant application. Uh they had a grant round that opened January tw- or that they announced in January twenty fifth. And Julia, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, uh the Pokemont Business Bureau currently has a grant application run for um projects that will enhance the quality of life in the township. Um proposals are due by March third, um and there's a fifty percent match acquired to this. Um this is coming out of hotel tax money. Um I called. Uh and spoke to Marlin. She said unfortunately where we are with the Rogers Edge bike park right now, that application is not viable or eligible for these funds. Um but I did talk to her about uh the ashtray mitigation in Minnesota Park. And she said that that would be a fantastic contender for this grant. Um so if the board is okay with it, I will write, uh rewrite the one for nature grant that I submitted. That we're still waiting to hear back for the Minnesota trees, um and we'll go from there.
We could, they could complement each other theoretically because they're both relatively small.
Yes.
Uh grants.
Yeah, the, the rest cap for PMV is twenty thousand. Um so it's well within what we've estimated the project's going to cost and uh we'll see if we can't get this for even cheaper.
Well, that would be pretty cool. I love that. Anybody anything they want to say on that before we move on to the next item? You're done?
Okay, great. I will uh let the board know when it's submitted.
Perfect. Thank you. Next is the discussion on soliciting an appraisal of the Strasburg Pokemont Airport runway. Robert, you requested that item, so I'm going to let you speak to that.
Yes, um and it's appropriate. We're doing it right now because we've just denied the Black Buffalo. Uh application. So this is an opportunity moment to do something about. Um a situation there that is just getting, getting worse. Uh the residents of Lake Bahala. Who are residents of the township have experienced um some grief over what is going on. In their area and it's tied to the airport area or the airport property. Uh three years ago, I think it was three years ago, um a poacher came in and. Sat on the airport property and shot one of the swans. Of the uh that was in the lake, Lake Bahala, and they were very proud of these two swans that had been there for a long time.
Yep, and he shot the mail.
Yes, and then posted pictures of it bragging about it on the internet.
And, and they went down to the river and tried the same thing. But anyway.
Over the last uh six months, uh somebody who is not owned up to. Admitting that it was them then has blamed uh Black Buffalo or the airport for. Has gone in and started um trapping and killing beavers. Then had built dams in the swamp area that's just off of Bahala. It's really between the, the twin, uh. Development, it was an alcohol that comes in and, and it, it goes over on the other side of the road and. It's a large swampy area just off of Lake Bahala. So these are trapped. Uh then the same people dug out the beaver dams, opened up the, the uh, the water source. So that the drain, the uh, the swamp became drained. Uh Lake Bahala is overfilled and all of this um. Goes out of Lake Bahala and then eventually into San Bro Creek. So I've, I've tried to consult the fishing game and also the conservation district about. What went on here and what happened. Um I haven't heard from either of them, which. Um makes me believe that they're ducking these calls because they don't want to discuss it. But it's a terrible situation and it's terrible for the people who live there. Um beyond that was the Black Buffalo project, which was going to be. A fifty foot high industrial building that overlooked Lake Bahala. Uh and uh right now, I think one of the solutions that we could perhaps. Uh start to implement is this, that, to look towards a plan where maybe we could um. Uh make a deal with the landlords, and there are three of them. To buy areas of the uh swamp as kind of an echo park. To buy a portion of the runway and turn it into perhaps a uh bicycle skill park. And um to have the township in the name of a, a park. Um own this area and control it, because right now it's open to trespass. And what's been going on there, um I think is, is terrible for the residents, but it's also. Uh doing ecological damage that we don't even know about to the swamp. So all I'm saying at this point is, I'd like the township to approve. Money to do a fair market assessment of the area that we might want to include. Um probably fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. I don't think it costs any more than that, especially. Because with, with assessments, you need comparables and there's not much. So. There's not a lot of research that anyone has to do to come up with a figure here. And then um, once we have a figure, whether we can. We can uh, we can uh decide how to proceed, whether we want to go for a grant. Um how we want to do it. Um there's, there's another motive for what I'd love to do here. In securing this land, which is eventually um. I think that part of the runway there, not the whole runway, the piece of it, would be where. We as a community could have a, a landing site for both the drones and also. Uh EV air taxis and EV air taxis which are already flying. Um and are being developed by twenty companies and all the airlines and Boeing. Are going to be the way that you'll get to Newark or um Allentown Airport. In ten years, that's what's going to happen. And um I have here the pictures of. Just what three of them look like. These are not, by the way, Star Wars futuristic things. These only fly. Um and a few of them have been certified, and I think at least one of them is starting services next year. And they're essentially large drones. But then, of course, Amazon and so forth also.
Uh there's three owners.
What?
Free owners. Did you say free owners?
Yes, did you say free owner? Yes, there are three owners, Brian. Three owners. Anyway, um so however we might construct, uh what we want to do there is let's say our aero park. Uh we also want to do it in a way that at some point, maybe a portion of it could be converted to this use because. For economic development of the area, we really need this. Uh one of the biggest problems. With these drones is not flying them. Uh it's where you land them and this would be our landing site. So uh anyway, that's what I've been asking for. You had a question?
I did. Um I'm a resident of the Lake Bahala community. And can I have my name, please? Yes, it's Matty Sonavila. I'm actually on the.
Spelled the last day.
You're good. A V I L A. I'm actually the secretary for the association. Um and I completely agree that. There are three owners, but I know two of them don't live in the state. And the berm that goes along the back of our, our lake actually needs repair, but again, the owners. Of that land do not live there, so I completely agree that since you guys denied Black Buffalo, which I know everybody's going to be happy to hear about. Um I think that would be super beneficial, at least turning it into a park, because everybody loves to use the trail. But with it being, now we know that the owners are not here. We would kind of need that permission. I think I completely agree with that and I think everybody in our community would enjoy that. I don't know if there's anybody else. In the Lake Bahala community, but having a park and having things repaired would be very beneficial, especially to the two swans that we still have. That was mine, but.
Well, I, I don't want to rain on your parade, but Black Buffalo can just simply refile. They pay fees.
Okay.
So they want to pay the, whatever the few thousand dollars are, they can refile their plan all over.
Well, I think Robert's got an interesting idea there. I mean, I mean, it's all about the conservation aspect of it and this interesting economic development points to it. I know you've been particularly passionate about preserving the airport right away. Because they don't really come back and that was a concern with Black Buffalo. Is this something you'd be thinking about from like open space, like funds, like that? On, because there's the wetlands there and all sorts of things that could be protected.
Well, that's another thing. Here's the area. These are the wetlands. The only thing that is, yeah, the only thing that isn't wetlands is basically. The, the runway area, which I assume is filled with somebody put in so many years ago, no one knows anymore, but other than that, it's a swamp.
Interested in hearing Matthew's appraisal.
Those, that's all floodwaters.
Wow.
And I would say, Mr. Chair, that the supervisor Logan High makes a good suggestion to say that not to exceed a certain number. This way you don't have to come back again if the number is higher than what you may have initially, so that.
Robert, you've done this more than I. What, what would you suggest?
I, I would say not more than two thousand, but I think we could probably make a better deal. I hope so.
That'd be nice. Okay, well, we've budgeted for a couple of these over the last couple of years, so you, do I hear a motion to do so?
Brian, do you want to make the motion?
I think his phone died or something, you know, you're on them.
I'll make the motion to approve not more than two thousand for a fair market appraisal of three properties. Uh portions of three properties in the uh Lake Bahala airport area.
Motion, Mr. Levinheim, I will second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is a discussion uh about Delaware Water Gap Fire Department's funding requests. Chief Howard Ikey to speak to that.
Good evening. Howard Ikey, Delaware Water Gap Department. Um here about our SCBA's, our air packs. Uh I've been in communications with Lucas for probably a month or so now. Uh coming up with ideas and uh I don't know, I've sent him. Um a copy of our quotation and the finance. I don't know if you guys got that at all or not. I didn't get a chance to make copy, but I can have one if you guys. The quote is for a hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That is for sixteen SCBA and thirty-two cylinders. Our current SCBA's are fifteen years old, they're added date. And the cylinders are at the end of their life. They can no, no longer be hydro or used. After I believe July of this year, we cannot use them anymore. We can't, if we use them, we can't fill them. Right, um. I've been coming here for a few years as well, since I, I took over as chief. And I've mentioned that we have been trying to get a grant for this through the AFG, which is the Assistance of Firefighters Grants. Uh we have been denied each time and our last time was uh, I think about a month ago, we got denied again. Um unfortunately, we are in, in an emergency situation with it now because. Um you know, they're at the end of their life and we need them for life safety. Um I have also been to, Monday I was at the Delaware Water Gas meeting asking them for the same thing. I'm asking for ten to twenty thousand to put down as a down payment. Uh the cheaper a down payment, as you can see on the uh finance form. The less you pay and it is a one-time payment a year. Uh with nothing down, it is for five years, twenty-nine thousand dollars, which we can't afford. Now, seven years is twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh the more we put down, the less the payment is. So thirty thousand would be. Five-year payments, one payment a year for five years would be twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. And for seven years, it would be seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um and we would make most of this payment out by the, the state grant. Uh from the office of uh the Fire Commissioner and we've been getting that every year. As long as we apply for, you get it. Uh last year, we got fifteen thousand. Um we used the last three years to pay off the command unit. Uh currently, we have most debt except for our regular bills of fuel if it breaks. Unfortunately, we had an engine go down, which uh I believe you guys knew about. And then we had to purchase an engine. We purchased it from Marshes Creek, kept it local and paid fifty thousand for that. A lot of reserve went for that. Um so I'm here to ask for uh, we'd like to get twenty thousand if possible. Um the payment, the first payment, once we receive the pack, say we receive them in March. The payment won't be due till the next month. The down payment is due when we receive the packs, once we order them. Which we, we would like to order them within the next month or so. Um and then we just have to do more fundraising, of course, to, to, to make up the money that's needed. Um we could do a lot of, you can do a few yourself. Uh seen us out on the, on the road doing point tosses.
What was your response like from Borough Council?
Um. They're going to look at it. I have another meeting next Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Um with, with them, um they had a lot of questions, so hopefully we can get that answered. Whether they're going to give us money or not, I, I, I don't know.
Chief, these are just my notes, so just for me, the twenty thousand down, twenty from here and twenty from Delaware Water Gap.
I'd like to put four, forty thousand down.
If you would put down forty, then what would be those monthly payments?
Uh it's one payment a year.
Yeah, not monthly, but uh the yearly payment, I'm sorry.
The lowest they have here is thirty thousand and for seven years would be seventeen thousand, so it would go down from there. And I, I believe we've come up with at least ten to throw in as well.
Okay. That's fine. These, again, these are just my notes.
Right, absolutely. And, and uh, you know, we thought about doing new cylinders. But the air packs themselves, the, the harnesses and everything else, uh Surviverr was bought out by Honeywell. And they were no longer made. So uh compressed air is our dealer. He services our um. Our air packs and everything. It's hard to get parts now because they're not being made anymore. So we, we can't even go to that route. Um we've looked at other packs in the last six months from another department. And they were so beat up. I mean, that's the cylinder we, we could use for a little longer, but they were so beat up, it wasn't worth paying money for. You know, they're, they're, they're getting rid of them for a reason.
Right.
No, we're not the only ones that have been denied. Uh Stroud Township was denied. They've been trying for four years. Of course, they have a little bit bigger budget, but they're the same, but we are. Um Barrett did get an award for, I think, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. I'm going to talk to them and see what they're doing with their old ones, but I don't know what kind of shape they're in as well. And we, we all typically uh, some of the areas is Scott, uh Marshes Creek and I think use MSA. I believe Bushka was going the oh, totally different route like we are with Drager. A Scott quote I got was for one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars and that's out of our budget.
Yeah. Do you mind if we if we ask, if we consult with the borough to see what they're doing and then we, you know, in the meantime, you check with Barrett and then we can circle back in like a week, ten days and then.
Yeah, I'll get.
Then our next meeting on that.
Yeah, like next Wednesday, I'll be at the borough's work session meeting. Do what they say there. We'll talk with Barrett. Like I said, I've been talking to Lucas for probably a month now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some different ideas. I did apply for the grant again for the SCBA and with pre-approval. But you're not guaranteed to get pre-approval, so you could purchase the packs and then. If they give you a free approval and you get the grant, you can take that money and pay for the packs and then we would, of course, give you your money back.
Yeah.
You know, and the other thing is the the radio grant, we did apply for that.
Yeah.
Now, we're not getting as many readers as we thought we would get out of it, but we're going to get a decent amount.
Well, that's great.
So and there's six or seven departments going in for that grant, so that thousand dollars you gave us for that went to that.
Yeah, well, that's that's good to hear.
Yeah, though, and and that bill, as you know, when it came last time was a hundred and almost a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars as well, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we will do our due diligence from from our side of the desk and then we'll be in touch throughout and. You know, I'll talk to Lucas. I haven't had the chance to meet with him about it yet, but we definitely want to do something. They're out of date in July.
Yeah, we are going to start moving forward with this. We need to. We need packs there.
If if something changes and you magically were to get like more money from some grant or or something. Are you able to amend your payment schedule with the company?
I haven't been able to. I haven't asked him. That's a good question. I can ask him. I'm sure early payout won't hurt, you know. I can ask him that question. We have looked at the two percent loan. Apparently you can only get, I think, maybe seven thousand for equipment.
Oh, okay.
So.
Then you need really like.
We need.
Loans or payments.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to have more pay more more loans and payments, so.
Well, thanks for bringing it to us and we're going to try and get you an answer really soon and and figure out.
I appreciate that. And I will do some more homework and we are looking at other grants as well. Not much out there for for fire.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Got a question. First of all, Chief, I appreciate what you do. God bless you. State's aid. When I was serving on Borough Council in East Stroudsburg, they needed a new ladder truck. They paid someone three thousand dollars to fill out the grant application and it worked. And I I heard you mention a couple of projects you didn't get and maybe you don't want to do that for items less expensive kind of.
We do have a grant writer that we pay and since the the first time he did it for us was fifteen hundred. The second time he did it was a thousand, third time was five hundred and this time it's free. We did pay for it.
What's his batting average?
He has gotten us the rescue equipment for sixty-six thousand.
They were all successful every time?
The L S D grant for the building he got us last year.
Oh, yeah.
And he also got us the brush truck that we currently have. So he's had a decent record. There are so many departments trying to get this equipment for life safety that. It's tough, as I'm sure you know.
Yeah, it it was bizarre to find out that the old truck. We we really couldn't sell to another fire company. I was calling studios in Hollywood to see if they wanted it as a prop. Just to try and get something for this beautiful fire truck that can't be used anymore.
We have one sitting in the back that has no motor, that the motor would cost more than we got the other truck for. And and trying to sell to departments for motor and nobody wants it.
Yeah.
And and the truck is. We had to take apart the truck.
Yeah.
I do great work. God bless.
Thank you. We'll be in touch very soon.
Soon, soon. Thank you.
Yeah, next is the Board of Supervisors report and I just wanted to address something that I alluded to earlier. There have been some questions regarding my involvement in certain things, so I think a lot of you may know, at least the people that have been coming to meetings. That I took a position with Representative Maureen Madden as her Chief of Staff. We call that. District Office Director. That is the the title of record, as we said. But I began this position in late December twenty-two, specifically December twenty-seventh. And the reason why I'm explaining this is because some folks have said that there's a conflict of interest, but I just wanted to go through the steps that I've gone through to make sure that there isn't. So in the course of the hiring process, I was required to disclose any secondary employment or public positions. And then I informed the Commonwealth during that process. That I I have these two positions. I also. Made sure that I was clear to proceed at that point and then legal cleared me and then I was I was hired. I sought further legal guidance on my ability to do all of the positions I previously mentioned. And this is because some of, you know, we've talked about tonight, some of the responsibilities in the state legislative office are related to grant writing. So I received guidance from the in-house Ethics Council, which I presented to our solicitor. And it was made clear that I'm able to fulfill my responsibilities. But that means that there are some changes to comply with the state ethics rules and local in-house rules as well. So a lot of elected officials at the municipal level also work for legislators like in Lehigh County or Hampton County. And then plenty in Lackawanna County as well. So what the guidance means exactly is that I have to avoid conflicts of interest. And guidance dictates that I do not conduct township work with regard to seeking grants from the state. Nor am I able to advocate for those grants to another representative, including, you know, Representative Madden. So that's why I recused myself tonight on a grant, even though we had got it before I took the position. I wanted to make abundantly clear that I'm, you know, not taking that lightly. I also want to emphasize that we have phenomenal staff here at the township. And I make sure that I communicate with them effectively to set agendas, make sure we have the documents that we need and. Make sure that everything is otherwise running smoothly and efficiently. And I think, as you can see, it hasn't impacted my ability to run a meeting or, you know, print agendas or any of those other township obligations. So because it was addressed to me in a rather negative connotation, I wanted to state that it's not my intention or obligation to discontinue my service to the township. And I do consider it an extreme honor, you know, to serve the eight thousand people of Smithfield and. I think that we've done a lot of really good work. I think it's had, you know, consensus over the last. Three years, even with the stuff we had to go through with COVID nineteen and closing. And now that things are finally in most part normal. I feel optimistic that things are going to continue on the upswing, but I just wanted to thank everybody for bearing with me and. I just wanted to shut down the the window that was suggested to me that I didn't have the the time because clearly I I'm here. And I'd like to think that I'm doing the best I can. That said, I can certainly take, you know, questions from folks or address anything directly if anybody had anything. That's right.
Yeah, I I just, I want to thank you for being so transparent and actually bringing it out to the public. I personally didn't see it as a conflict, but. But I I do appreciate that because we have brought up to our town council for certain things like. Fire department issues that the president should not vote, he's part of the fire department. And he should refuse himself and short-term rentals and they have not refused themselves even after being had. You were proactive in this. And, you know, kudos to you. I I appreciate the transparency.
Thank you. I appreciate that and if anybody has anything else, I'm happy to talk. People know I can.
Has it been three years?
Yeah.
He's got the security and everything.
You know, yeah, I feel like I was I was a young man when you started.
That's funny. Martha, I see you have your hand raised on there.
Yes, actually, the woman said basically much of what I was going to say, but I'll just echo that I do appreciate the transparency and. Not just with this issue tonight, but I think in general in the township. You know, the board has made great strides to make sure that everything is very transparent and I think I just want to say that it's noticed and appreciated and thanks for bringing up. The process that you went through to make sure that you are, you know, watching out for ethics and making sure everything is done properly. Thank you for your service.
Thanks. I appreciate that, Martha. Thank you. That said, Brian's no longer here. Robert, do you want to note anything for the Board of Supervisors report?
Yeah.
We have bills for the month, a hundred and thirty thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-eight cents, which includes insurance. Costs for next year as well as utilities, gas, of course, propane. And some engineering bills and one payroll round from the last payroll period. If I have any question?
Motion paid bills.
Motion, Mr. Love and I will second. Any questions? All in favor?
I.
I. Any public comments this evening?
Yeah, I have one comment. The Smithfield Rotary Rotary Club of the Smithfields was approached by a company called Pathstone, which specializes in youth reentry. Which means that to find jobs for youth or offenders on first offenses between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four. I just bring this up because I think it's a very worthwhile cause and a very good organization. If anybody has any interest in providing jobs. This is where to go. It's a it's in Tannersville. It's called Pathstone.
Any other comment?
Right.
Hi, Ross Albert. I'm here as a former owner of engineering business in the township. I'm retired, but I still have a lot of people who talk with me about solar power. And I'm happy to see that the township is moving forward with something regarding solar. My question is, is has there been a draft available for public view? One of my concerns and I'm hearing tonight, I don't know exactly where it's coming from. It sounds like there's something in the ordinance about point two-five miles, I'm guessing, from a power line.
Not not exactly. The way that Eric Koopman suggested the township create an overlay district was by going point two-five miles. Outside either side of the power line, going up and following accordingly and then picking properties that I believe are thirty acres above. Based on their proximity to the power line.
Okay, I guess my question along that line is, is there a definition of power line?
It's not really, I wouldn't say not really, but there are industry standards, as you know, I believe it's a two-hundred-and-thirty kilowatt line. That they have to have the main line in order to connect to put the power back onto the grid. And so Eric would be the better guy to answer that question.
The reason I ask that, and I understand what you're you're saying, and I believe that the proper word is kilovolt. And that's the right concept. I understand that. But from my understanding and having worked with people developing solar systems to connect to the electric grid. There are other distribution lines that they can connect to with a smaller size solar farms. And my concern is that you, if the only powered line they can connect to is the. The two-hundred-and-thirty plus or minus thousand kilovolt line. You're limiting the ability of the smaller probability solar farms. Connecting to other distribution systems, which are the typical power lines you see along the major highways. So that's why I'm asking is if there's a definition in there or is there a map showing where the.
We can get you a copy of the the draft and and the draft map too. Our planning commission just reviewed, so I haven't had a chance to put it on the website, but.
Question. I've tried to follow, but I know you spoke about it in the fall and obviously it's on tonight's agenda. I didn't know if there had been something posted, a draft posted anywhere for the public to view to offer some comments. You know, I think it's great that you're doing it, but I want to make sure you're not boxing.
Yeah, we'll send you, we'll send you the 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 draft of that and then it's going to go on the website and, you know, probably the next day or so.
Okay.
Yeah, that the board has voted to send it over to the planning commissioner.
Yeah, we just.
Okay, thanks. Do I need to sign this?
You're welcome. But we know, we know. Yeah, no, you're.
It's it's so I can make sure that when there are people who comment, like if I'm unfamiliar with the last name.
Okay, I'll sign that. Okay, thank you.
I always wanted your your autograph, Russ. Okay. Any other public comments this evening? Do you like your motion to adjourn?
Welcome to adjourn.
My Mr. Love and I'm all second. All in favor?
I.
I. We are adjourned at seven thirty-seven. Yeah, thank you, everybody. Are you sir? Yeah, absolutely. Do you want to do the?
I'm working.